All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening, good evening, everyone. This is a great turnout. This is a really good turnout. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. We are so glad to have you all today. My name is Jai Singletary. I'm a policy analyst in the office of Council President Pro Tem Tate in District One. And we are excited to be in District Six, joined by Councilmember Santiago Romero, to talk about the proposed animal keeping ordinance. Before we get started, want to do some housekeeping things first. We have some folks joining us via Zoom as well, and we have language interpretation services available for any individuals needing Spanish or Arabic interpretation. For Spanish interpretation, at the bottom of your screen, you will see a globe, and we have translators on right now, and you will hit the Spanish button. And then from there on out, you'll hear Spanish. For Arabic, because Zoom does not come with an Arabic channel, you have to click Chinese. I know that sounds funny, but they don't have a preset Arabic channel. So again, Spanish for Spanish. If you want Arabic, click Chinese. Now, without further ado, I would like to introduce Council President Pro Tem Tate, and he will get us kicked off with this meeting. If you could join him off with a round of applause, please. Thank you, thank you. Keep it going, keep it going, keep it going, keep going. Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, no pressure, no pressure. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us here in District Six. We appreciate this opportunity. I am Detroit City Council President Pro Tem James Tate, and I represent, for those of you who may not be aware, I represent the far northwest side of the city of Detroit. If you think Brightmore, you think Grandmont, Rosedale, that's us. We border Southfield to the north, and to the west, we border Redford Township. So just an understanding of where we're coming from. But today, we're not just talking about something in District One. We're talking about an ordinance that we're looking to amend citywide, that would allow residents throughout the city of Detroit to be able to keep certain animals. Now, I know when we say that, animals outside of dogs and cats and snakes, I guess people have snakes and hamsters and all, see? A whole bunch of animals people already keep. All we're doing is looking to expand them to a certain extent. And it's very, very, very nuanced in what we're doing, not going all the way where some people want us to do. And I know that there are some who say, "Don't add these animals at all." I know I've heard it. This is why it's important for us to have these conversations. This is the third one that we've had thus far. We've had one in District One, had another in District Four, and here we are today in District Six. Before I continue to talk, I just want to please, if you will, join me in bringing up and announcing and welcoming your Detroit City Council member. Gabriela Santiago Romero, ladies and gentlemen. I was waiting till she got up here.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I am so happy to see everybody here today. I know this is an issue that goes pretty down the middle. There are folks that are very interested in beekeeping and having chickens in the neighborhoods, and then we have folks that don't, that don't want to see it, that don't want it in the neighborhood. And we're here to listen to all sides. I'm here to take notes, because we are just beginning to have the conversations. We want to be able to make sure that we hear everyone's concerns and ideas around this issue. So thank you, Pro Tem, for coming out today, and looking forward to hearing everybody's insights. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Santiago Romero. Give her a round of applause. Come on, now, this is your council member. We clap for her all the time down at the office, because she does good work. So I just, again, so right now, we're having the public conversation today in this iteration. But I'm going to tell you a little secret. We've been working on this thing for almost 10 years, if not a little bit longer than that. And I'll tell you, it started out, it started out to include additional animals than what you're going to see here today. This was not something that I, I'm not someone who has a whole bunch of animals in my backyard. I have not been advocating for animals my entire life. I love animals. I love documentaries, the whole nine. I got dogs, had them all my life. But I'm not one who is clamoring for chicken, ducks, and bees myself personally. But when we look around the city of Detroit, there are a lot of folks who are already doing it. And a lot of people who are already doing it, that are doing it with no issues, safely. They're doing it, and most neighbors don't even know about it whatsoever. The goal was not to allow these animals to be pets. It was to be used to ensure that we have better stance, a better understanding of our food security within our community. Right now, everything's going up. Prices are going up sky high. In addition to that, when you turn around, every time you turn around, you look online and you read the paper, there's recalls, and there's all these types of bad bacteria that we've got to worry about as it relates to our foods. And it's one thing if those bad bacteria and those issues are taking place somewhere in some warehouse around the country or somewhere else in the city. But we have a better understanding of what's happening in our own neighborhoods, in our backyard, within our communities. So this was an opportunity for us to do just that. Let's have the conversation. Again, we know that everybody is not supportive of everything that comes before us, but we want to make sure that we at least understand what is and is not on the table, what is and is not fact, and what is and is not fiction. And with that being said, Jai, I believe right now, are we ready to go into the presentation? Go to you, or do I pivot? All right, we're going to bring Jai back up. And y'all give a please, a round of applause, because it's a lot of work to pull all this together. For the team, we got media services here. Also, Jai, who has shepherded this process, again, this is the third one. This is, again, not an easy task. And we also have other members of the team who have assisted. Jai?
All right, thank you, sir, thank you, sir. And again, I see the room filling up, and this is exciting. So I'd like to bring up two individuals, or one individual right now, Mr. Kimani Jeffrey. He's a city planner with the City Planning Commission. CPC, if you wouldn't mind welcoming Mr. Jeffrey with a round of applause.
How's everyone doing tonight? It's good to see all of the people in the room tonight. My name is, again, is Kimani Jeffrey. I'm with the City Planning Commission. I just want to give a thank you to the council members in the room, as well as everybody that took your time out to attend tonight. We're going to be sharing some information that should hopefully be helpful to let you know what is currently being proposed, but we do want to let you know that it is not in its final iteration. We're here tonight to hear from you all, to see and to inform what this policy might look like, okay? So if we could move forward, actually, we'll be moving forward. So what are we discussing tonight? We're discussing animal husbandry, or what we, what's more simply known as animal keeping. And that's essentially the keeping of certain urban farm animals and domestic honeybees for personal consumption, and utilizing their eggs, meat, or honey. So this is not, as Pro Tem Tate said, this is not for just new pets. This is for products that these animals produce. And so again, we're looking at the possible passage of the allowance of chickens, ducks, and honeybees. So what's currently being proposed on the books is eight chickens or ducks at a maximum, and then two hives, or two honeybee hives at a maximum. Now, I know many people may feel like there's issues currently, so this is an effort to sort of hone that in and bring it in from what you may possibly currently be seeing on the streets. So with many different people keeping other animals, those are not being considered in this ordinance. The only animals, again, are chickens, ducks, and with the addition of honeybees. Again, we're not considering roosters. Why? Because of the noise that roosters bring. We're not considering pigs. We're not considering goats, sheep, cows, horses, turkeys, or rabbits. None of those are being considered in this current legislation that's being developed. And why would we even start to consider animal husbandry in a city like Detroit in the first place? Well, as Pro Tem Tate said, as you look around the country, as you look around Detroit, I've talked to some of the people in the food industry, and they talked about how close we were to losing meat, access to meat in the city during the COVID crisis. There was, it was very frail during the COVID crisis. And this is just, this is nothing new. It just exposed some of the issues that we have even more from what we saw during the COVID crisis. So we see eggs that have increased 70% over the last couple of years. We see chicken prices. If you're like me, I used to buy chicken wings for my daughters, $5 a pack. They shot up to about $15, $20 at one point. They're starting to come down a little bit, but that's just showing some of the issues that we currently have. And then all across the country during COVID, meat processing centers were on the verge of closing all around the country, and so there was a big scare during that time. So if you look on the right, you see some of the products that the animals being considered produce. And so we've talked to animal keepers, and they've told us how many people are able to keep their, feed a whole family from the eggs that are produced. Chickens can produce over 300 eggs. One chicken can produce over 300 eggs per year. And this is nothing new. Sometimes we, as Detroiters, feel like things are just being thrown on us. Anybody ever felt like that? Like we're just getting the brunt of everything, and we're just the experiment? But this has happened all across the nation. And so we just made a map to show many of the places where this is already currently, ordinances have already been passed. Everywhere from San Francisco and Oakland, all the way to one of the most densest places in the world, New York City. And so this is nothing that's new. It's happening. And even if you look in Michigan, we have over 20 cities that have already codified the keeping of animals for their, for what they produce in the state of Michigan. And then even in the Midwest, you see Cincinnati, Cleveland, Chicago, Fort Wayne. So it's many different places. And this is not, this is just what we put on the map, but there's many other places that we just didn't have the time to populate on this map. But this is just showing you that this is not anything new, but this is an effort to sort of rein in what's currently already happening in, in the United States and in the city of Detroit. So why propose this ordinance? Again, many residents and organizations are already currently keeping animals. So we're trying to put some boundaries on what can happen and make it legal so that people don't become criminalized for this, but also so that it doesn't impact the neighborhoods as much as it may currently be happening. And so this is what that might look like. Some people even ask, "Why don't you just, you know, use a pilot area?" Well, what we find is, this is not happening just in certain types of neighborhoods. It's from, you know, high vacancy areas to very dense areas. It's happening from Brightmore all the way to Indian Village, as you see in this picture. So it's not just one typical, or one type of neighborhood that this is happening. It's happening everywhere. And so to be fair, and not to just designate one area of the city to allow animals, we're trying to find a way to do it in a fair way, where it's not just put on one neighborhood, but it's spread so that everybody has the opportunity to have some sort of role in this legislation. And so this is what it looks like, I'm sorry, just skipping a little bit, but this is what it looks like where one resident is already keeping chickens, and this is sort of like a chicken room, where they have room to, you know, exercise and get some recreation activity. This is, you might not even know that ducks were being kept in here, unless maybe a neighbor might tell you. There's many places, there's certain people that I've talked to and been out to where their neighbors may not even know, or in other times, neighbors are okay with it because they have good relations. I think that's very key, that animal keepers have to be good neighbors. And it can't be the sort of sense of entitlement, but there has to be good neighbor relations from what I find in my interactions. This is chickens being kept in a garage, where a chicken coop has been created inside of a garage. And then this is just another example of a chicken coop in the open. And so when it comes to honeybees, want to make it clear that, one, this is what honeybees might look like, honeybees being kept on a site would look like. This is a beehive. And then this is just another image of Detroit hives, the originators of Detroit hives and the honeybees that they're keeping. But this is also showing certain protections that you can incorporate, such as the flyway barrier that allows you to separate, because bees, when they fly, they fly out laterally. And so a flyway barrier is a common practice amongst beekeepers to keep bees from going into a neighboring dwelling if they're close to the property line. And one thing we want you to know is that we are not talking about legalizing wasps. Wasps are very aggressive insects. They can, those are the ones that many times are the ones that are stingy. Honeybees may sting, but they're a lot less likely, likely to sting. They're not as aggressive. They're gentle, generally speaking. They pollinate our plants, so they help in the plant ecosystem. But more importantly, the reason they're being considered for this ordinance is because they produce honey. So how is this happening? So we want you to know that we have the director, one of the directors of Animal Control here, Animal Care and Control here with us. And so we've had an interdepartmental working group where we've talked about all of the different issues that have come up. So we've been talking about this since 2016. We had listening and learn sessions in 2016 at different areas of the city, and there's been ongoing engagement throughout, throughout those years. So as President Pro Tem said, this has been going on over 10 years. And so there were animals that were originally included that we removed. Originally, the ordinance had goats. It had things such as goats and those types of animals in, but we removed those after hearing feedback from the community. So that shows how the feedback impacts the legislation. But these are some of the things we're considering. How the animals are generally kept, medical treatment, shelter and care. The ordinance would prescribe how the enclosure space has to look, how the pen space has to look, how it has to be kept up, how it has to be clean, the waste and manure management, and all of these different things. And I don't know if, you know, Director Kumpf could speak to it, but penalties are very, very stiff. And so that's one of the things that I hear many times, what's the enforcement mechanisms? Where there are penalties that if you don't do these things, that's what drives you to do them, or you can lose your license. And so when we talk about, just again, in the conversation of care for the animals, the ordinance will be regulating shelters and the enclosures, food storage, how the food is kept so it's not drawing vermin and pests, but it will have to be kept in a particular way so as not to encourage pests on the site. Again, waste management, even composting, and then just other mechanisms to keep vermin out. So these would be things that are regulated by the city so that it reduces the possibility for any negative impacts. There will also be tagging. So right now, we hear many times that animals are getting out. So tagging will help the city to know where animals are actually being kept, and that tagging would be connected with licensing. So what those licenses would do is licenses have to be renewed every year. And so if you're not a good actor, you can lose that license. So that's a very important piece versus currently, it's just no regulation on the books at all, and so people have nothing to lose. But if you have a license that you can lose, you're a lot more likely to be in accordance with the ordinance and the provisions on the books. And then there's other provisions related to deceased animals. You can't keep dead animals on your property. Inspection authority, the Animal Control has authority to inspect your property, and they know where these locations are because they'll be licensed. And then also slaughtering, there will be no slaughtering permitted on a site. And so if that is found to be happening, the license can be taken. There's also, again, penalties that Director Kumpf could go into that could be imposed on somebody that's doing these things. And then this is just talking about the licensing process. You have to have an application. There's an annual fee. And then you couldn't have any current violations. So if somebody is a bad actor, they have to clean up and get rid of, correct any violations that are currently on the books for that person before they can even be issued a license. So you can't just start as a bad actor and then start keeping animals. You have to clean up your past history before that could take place. And then just, there'll be provisions for procedures for licensing. And then lastly, zoning. How many people are familiar with zoning? How many people are impacted by zoning? By show of hands. It should be everybody in, in the room, because zoning is the rules for what you can or cannot do with your property. I'll say it one more time. Zoning is the rules for what you can or cannot do with your property, so it impacts everybody, whether you're a renter or owner. But zoning is also one of the chapters, there's two chapters that will be amended, Chapter 50, which is zoning, Chapter 6, which is the Animal Control chapter of the city code. And so zoning dictates where this will be allowed. So currently, what's proposed is that it will be allowed in residential districts, which are R1 through R6 districts, business, which are B1 through B6 districts, and our industrial districts. Not to, these are not inclusive of all, but these are the ones that would impact most people, the residential business and industrial districts. And so again, zoning, this is a typical example from Grand River and Oakman Boulevard. In the red, you see the B4. Those are your typical business districts along your commercial corridors. The yellow is indicating R1, which is your typical residential district, and that's where single-family homes primarily are only allowed to go. And then M3 and M4, the oranges and the blue colors are showing your industrial districts. So this is just showing, just a snapshot of what zoning might look like on your typical neighborhood, and how we'll have control through zoning over where this will be allowed. So one thing that we're trying to consider is the impact to the neighbors, because we want to make sure that the impact to the neighbors are minimized. And so along with the provisions of how you keep animals, we also have certain, what we call setbacks, or basically the distance from one point to another point. So there has to be a certain distance, particularly for chickens and ducks. You can't keep those closer than 30 feet from your neighbor's home. So you have to be at least 30 feet from your neighbor's home before you can set up a shelter or enclosure space for the animals. That make sense? No? So if you measure, if you measure from your neighbor's home 30 feet, that's the first point, and I, we'll show a visual of what that looks like. That's the first point where you will be able to keep or set up a pen space for those animals. We'll show a visual. And then there's other setbacks. They can't be closer than five feet from the property lot line, so it's not immediately next to your fence, and then it's impacting the neighbor. And then for honeybees, honeybees will have to be at least 25 feet from the property line. At least 25 feet from the property line. Then there also are cases where they will have to provide a flyway barrier, which I showed in one of the previous pictures, that helps to keep the bees from flying into a neighboring property. So this is what, a simple version of what that would look like. So if, in the green boxes, if that's your neighbor, and your, your, your home is in the blue, the animal keeping could not take place within 30 feet from your neighbors. So what is this going to do? It's going to exclude some homes. Some places may not be able to provide 30 feet from their neighbor's house, and so they wouldn't be allowed to keep animals. Other neighbors, other neighborhoods, they would. And so maybe, you know, certain neighborhoods where there's some vacancy, they might be able to buy maybe their sideline, and then now they'll be able to keep animals, chickens and ducks. So it's going to be based upon the proximity to your neighbor's homes and those setbacks that have to be provided. And then this is just showing, again, if there's an alley, there's more space that has to, less space that has to be provided than if there's not an alley. And then, just wanted to show this, this is the last slide. This just shows that out of the last three years, from 2020 to 2023, these are the citations or citations that have been given by Animal Control, over 5,000 citations. And so these are for dogs and your typical pets and animals. But for farm animals, as they're classified, your chickens, your ducks, and any other farm animal that people might be keeping currently today, between 2020 and 2023, there have only been 34 citations given. So that's less than 1% of all of the citations that's been given for all of these animals. So it's showing us that there currently isn't a huge issue. And if, I've heard, I have heard some people that said that there's things that are happening that are illegal. We have our director from Animal Control here today, and they are very, I'll leave that alone, but they, they, they do their job. They do their job. And so what we'll say is, what we'll say is, we see that less than 1% of citations have been for farm animals in the last three years. And so it's showing that this is not a huge issue as far as violations today. And we're trying to further rein in the possibility of having issues by putting some constraints and boundaries on what is allowed in the city today. So I hope this helps for informational purposes, and we are going to give the floor.
Now, what is, what is the proposed license?
The proposed? It was $50 as of now. Annual for renewal as well. And are we taking questions right now, or do we want to?
I'm happy to switch over to questions. So yes, we are going to questions right now. Mr. Whitfield is just coming around with the microphone.
Okay, so I have a question. So I'm a walker, and I have grandkids. No disrespect, but the dogs are crazy. We can't enforce the dogs, so how are we going to enforce these pets and people to do measurements? And then what about the people, as we said, that may be allergic to bees? How they may, that's a consideration. And then who, how many enforcement officers are you planning on having per district? Because when I call the dog pound, they tell me they don't have enough people to come out. And this morning, I'm walking, me and an older lady, she was like, "Two dogs chased her." So we can't even walk and ride our bikes in our own neighborhood, so now we're going to bring animals, which we know brings other rodents and things like that. And people with dogs won't even pick up the dog poop, so they, they think they're going to pick up the poop from, from, you know, chickens and everything? So those are things, you know, we want to know. If you're going to have ordinances, how many ordinance officers are we going to have to enforce each, each district in the city of Detroit?
Thank you. Thank you for all of those questions. Can we bring up, oh, we'll keep, we'll keep this mic up front.
Okay, this one, that one? This one, there we go. Thank you very much. A lot of questions there, ma'am, and I forgive me if I don't catch all of them, but if I can start with the last question first. How many enforcement officers are there for the city? Animal Control is approved to have 23 animal control officers in the city. That is for the entire city. That is up from the five that we used to have in 2019. We are authorized to have seven investigators, that's one per council district. And again, as with every job nowadays, we're always in a constant situation where we're hiring folks. Right now, we have five of the seven council districts filled. We have 21 of the 23 enforcement officers filled. And those are folks that cover the entire city and then are also assigned to a council district. But when there's a increase in one district, an investigator from another district may be assigned to cover. So it's, the services are spread. We're talking about two separate things in terms of dog enforcement and livestock enforcement. Livestock enforcement, just like dog enforcement, is complaint-based, and as you saw there, over 5,000 citations have been issued over the past several years. Those continue to increase, but the city of Detroit is a large space, so it is not possible for officers to be everywhere at once, and it is complaint-based. Those are prioritized based on aggressive animals, dangerous dogs that are biting. Those are the priority, and then it steps down from there. So if a dog, for example, you call and say, "I saw the dog out, and it's a stray," that's not going to be the top priority for a dog complaint where someone says the dog's trying to bite someone. And they have to prioritize that in order to assign resources. We're in the same situation that when you call 911, the police department dispatchers prioritize critical calls first. And right now, the police department is also the backup, because they're responding to animal-related calls as well to provide assistance with the animal services. When we talk about complaint-based for livestock, right now, we have lots of folks that have chickens, ducks, and a variety of things. We respond when we get a complaint, and right now, to make sure everybody's clear, there is no grace period. These animals are still considered illegal. It's unlawful. And if Animal Services receives a complaint, an investigator or an officer would be assigned to come out and check. And if you have something that's currently unlawful, folks would be given a chance to, if the animals are being kept properly, just mere possession is the only problem, they would be given an opportunity to remove the animals from the city. If they were being kept improperly... If they were being kept improperly, and as the citations show and as we've dealt with throughout the last several years, if they're not voluntarily removed, citations are issued, and the animals may be confiscated and removed involuntary, which has happened. And again, I, I tell you, at the shelter, when I come in and I've got six roosters and kennels that we're trying to get placed outside of the city, I know we're confiscating those. The other issue you raised was people that aren't picking up animal waste versus people that aren't picking up animal waste in the backyards. We do have B seat and health department inspectors, when they get complaints of unfit conditions, do go out, as do the animal control officers. They can issue citations for yards not being cleaned up. And summer is probably our peak season because one thing folks will tell you is if it's not clean, it smells. And it will attract that attention very quickly. The other thing, and I heard some ladies speaking about it earlier, were roosters, and that's why they're not included, because roosters don't lay eggs. Newsflash, I had somebody tell me, he said, well, they're here for eggs. I'm going, you missed something, no eggs. Roosters are not kept for that purpose, and that's why they're specifically excluded. Not only because they're noisy, but they're also mean, you know? But the issue we have with livestock, with ducks and chickens, and the issue that we would have with bees, are not the same issues that we have with dangerous dogs. These are not animals that are going to be roaming and potentially injuring someone. So we give those a priority. I think I covered most of the questions you had, if I did, did I miss any?
Yeah, I have a question.
Uh, hold on.
Well, you put a number and then give me a number per county and just...
It's just the, the fact that we do not have enough people to cover things. And if people won't respect and keep their dog on leash, how we expect for them to keep their chickens, pigs, and we got pigs and horses running around, I got pictures of them. They run around on southwest Detroit. So they're not coming themselves, somebody's bringing them in. And then we call and we do a complaint, and somebody told me for, for the, I think for the horse, it said it wasn't their department. I had to call a wildlife, uh, somebody.
That's us.
Yeah, no, but they told me it wasn't, and you know, so we just, we're trying. Do you want to keep our neighborhood's livelihood?
We do horses. Anybody has any questions? That's us. We've already been going up, we've been doing it for the city. We've had strays, we've had calls, we work with the police department. If anybody has any questions about horses, have any else?
So, one moment.
KUMPF. My cards are up here, happy to hand them out.
Mark, M-A-R-K, K-U-M-P-F. Now I've got cards up here if anybody would like them.
Yeah, it was mentioned, I just want to make it very clear that there are certain situations where the DNR, it's Mark, come on, Mark, Mark, Mark. I was about to say, come on, man, don't leave me, everybody. There are, there are certain situations where the DNR will be called out as opposed to animal care and control. When we start talking about wildlife, so when we talk about raccoons, when we're talking about groundhogs and, and deer, that's not the city of Detroit. That is the DNR, that is their responsibility. So I want to make it very clear that there are ti- Okay, so we have challenges, come on, let's talk about it, let's, what we're here for.
Thank you, thank you very much. I just want to talk about moments that the challenges we face here, right? Nobody's talking about the challenges that we face right now. We're infested with groundhogs, rats, squirrels, snakes, rabbits, raccoons, possums. Guess what I saw the other day, a coyote. Last year, I saw a fox walking down Schaefer, right?
Right.
We already suffer with the chickens loose, the roosters crowing, right?
Can I, can I pause though? Because I want to make sure we have a conversation.
No, but I'm just saying.
So what's the issue?
The issue is, we already have a lot of challenges. We had two of our residents stung, had to go to the hospital because of bee stings, and go to the hospital twice.
But bees aren't going anywhere, that's what I'm saying. So let's keep that in mind. We got to look at what we're actually proposing.
Okay, but listen, let's talk about the challenges that we're facing.
Yes, ma'am.
The challenges, we already don't get the service required. The young lady told you about the dog. We call animal control about the groundhog infestation, they said there's nothing they can do. We have seen chickens going two, three streets over, around the garbage cans. And they, people got pictures here. The garbage man will not pick up the trash. Guess what happens after the fecal matter from the chickens? Here come the rats.
Did anyone report the chickens?
Yeah, we, we, wait a minute.
Okay, so that's, so, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, y'all, we, come on. What I'm saying is, yes, it is, hold on, we got to have an organized meeting, y'all, let's, let's do this. So what I'm saying is, we want to make sure that we have that information and we have it codified.
Yes.
So it's one thing to say it, I can't say as the sponsor of the ordinance, if it's happening or isn't happening. I'm not denying that it's happening. But we want to go back and look at the department and pull in that information to ensure that they did what they're supposed to do or didn't do. Because they may go out and take a look at, but the groundhog isn't just going to sit there and wait.
Of course, and right now, our neighborhood police officer, he has been to the home several times. We have reported it to our neighborhood, Department of Neighborhoods, Eva Torres and Mr. Mills. Matter of fact, Mr. Mills was riding around last week. We have a whole bunch of challenges that our neighborhood needs to be solved before we can even discuss animal keeping, right? So we, you have to look at what we're infested with, what we're dealing with. Right now, we have a man two streets over, got a gaggle of turkeys along with his chickens. One got a pig across Schaefer with a goat. We got goats up on, out of drive. So you open the door for some, then down the road, more going to come. And I, I hate to say that, I, I agree where the price is going up. But you say for personal use, if they're not feeding the neighborhood, we don't need them. If we can't kill a chicken and put him in my pot, we don't need him. And then the thing is, we have to understand, our quality of life is being impeded on. We already have an air pollution problem that nobody can solve. We already, we, we're getting tickets, we're getting tickets for a whole bunch of things. Let me tell you what else we suffer with. We suffer with people parking their cars on the lawn. We suffer with the wood burning at night. We suffer with the dog fighting, the cock fighting, the dog on car chop rings behind the high fences. We got people building fences from the alley to the sidewalk. And we call and they've been ticketed, but it still happens. So we got to solve the problems we have first before we introduce another problem to our community. Thank you.
So I, I, I think what we have to, and I, I don't disagree whatsoever. I mean, I live in the city, been born and raised, lived in the city my entire life. No, I, no, but I live in the city, I live in the city. So let's, so the reality is, we are never going to solve every issue. We're going to continue to work on it, but we're, oh, we're going to, we're going to continue to work on it. I didn't say we're not going to work on the issues, but we're not going to solve every issue before we get every, before we move and do something different, something else, right? There's always a tweak as we move beyond where we are today. So we fix an issue, we address an issue, but there may be another issue that comes up before us. There's never going to be a situation where everything is going to be resolved. So we have situations where folks have more animals. We actually had the director right here say exactly what we plan to do, what the ordinance is outlining. We cannot say we, we can't do anything differently until we solve every issue that we have in southwest Detroit. This is a city ordinance, and I say this again, and I'm not saying it to, to sound any kind of way. There are nine council members, nine. So if council member Santiago Romero says, you know what, I'm not supportive of it, there's still eight. So that's why I want us to talk about what we actually, hold on, hold on, hold on, I get you, I get you, I get you, I hear you. What I'm saying is, and I will, I will make sure everybody have their questions answered. But what I'm saying is, let's talk about what actually is here, what can you tolerate, what can you stand? And then we can move beyond that because it's not just a southwest Detroit ordinance. This is the city of Detroit. So in District One, in District Two, and we, we're not carving out anything for any individual district. It's what I'm trying to say. So let's just listen to what is being presented, let's provide alternatives. And if your answer is still no, we got to respect that. But all I'm saying is, let's also make sure we keep an open mind that every issue that we have on the table right now is not going to be addressed before we move on to other things in the city of Detroit, citywide. We want to make sure that you're a part of this and you shape this. That's why we brought, made sure we brought this meeting here and didn't do it in silence. That's important.
Hello.
Yes, we have a question, yes, ma'am.
My name is Madeline Beck Marshall. I stay on Beatrice in Omaha. I've experienced firsthand with this chicken ordeal. My neighbor across the street have five chickens, well, had. Excuse me, sir, we call for help, but every time we call 911, we was turned down. We was told, you better get your pot and your grease ready. Now, I'm busy calling to get help because my neighbor's chickens, which is proximity thirty feet, twenty-five feet, they can't control their livestock. They busy coming over in my territory all times a day, all times a night. This is not acceptable. We own lots. We do not own acres. Acres hold livestock.
How many, you said five chickens?
Yes.
Okay, you'll see that five chickens don't require acres. But what, but it does require a responsible owner. That is the key.
That was not the source.
And if that's the case, that's what needs to be tweaked. If you're calling 911, as been mentioned, that's not a 911 issue. Animal control is where the call should go.
They didn't even channel us.
They, they won't do that. That's why we're having this conversation. Some of this is, look, the departments are separate. I like to be honest with folks. I don't want to placate and just tell you what you want to hear to get me out of the room, and people say, good job, being honest with you. 911 is focused on criminal activity.
Yes.
Animal control, they're focused on animals. So I would direct that call to animal control as we move forward. They're not going to route you, that's being honest with you.
Okay, but we still have the problem. Because the rodents are taking over, okay? I've had to call pest control to come out several times, and I'm still waiting today for them to come and put me some more tr-
But not animal control, is what I'm saying. Animal control, I'm not saying we called, am I talking about this situation? I can't talk about every situation, I'm saying this one. We got to compartmentalize, right? And if there's one where we did, then let's look at that issue and deal with it from that standpoint. But for yours, ma'am, 911 would not be the place to make that phone call. It would be to animal control. The director just said, give me a call.
I got you, ma'am, now, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we're, see the mic, oh, lots of hands.
Yeah, lots of hands.
So I'm saying, I, I do want to say this, we have lots of hands and still a full discussion. We actually have a couple animal keepers in the room to speak with you here today. But Mr. Bates, good to see you again.
We got two more, we're going to do, we're going to go to the rest of the presentation. And we're going to make sure questions are answered, though, before we leave.
In this area out here, a lot of the city services that are normal to other areas of the city, we are slighted out here, okay? That is the biggest problem. We can make calls to the correct departments, log and do everything right, but we still don't get any response because we are somewhat disconnected, so people think. But we're still Detroit. We pay our taxes out here. What we would like to see is a better response from city services in regards to things that are happening out here. Yeah, the issues that are happening out here, some of our issues are very unique, okay? And we want those addressed. I mean, we got a long litany of, of things, I could stand here and talk for a minute, but we need to make sure that when this particular area puts in a call because something is amiss, it needs to get addressed.
Yes, sir. I don't disagree with you as a part of the legislative body. And again, as a resident who's lived in the city my entire life, I want the same thing. But from the standpoint of who operates departments, city council, that's not our role and responsibility. But I hear you, it doesn't matter. The city, no, this, so I, I, I think you got, again, we don't communicate very often. All I'm doing is just flat out saying the truth. It's not about me refuting what you're saying, I agree with you. But the reality is, we're proposing an ordinance because this is what we do, it's legislative body. And listening to the community, both, both sides. There are some who say, we want this in the worst way. They've been asking for this, and this is not just new Detroiters coming in, it's new Detroiters, old Detroiters who've been here for, black, white, every hue and ethnicity in between. So we're listening to both sides. That's why we're having this, this conversation today, and we've been having it up to this point. Didn't want to just force anything, we want to make sure we have your voices. We got one more question, then we're going to go to the rest of the presentation. But I guarantee you, we are going to have an opportunity for everyone's question to be responded to. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Vila White, and I'm not from Detroit, I'm from Ecorus. And we were invited to this meeting too. Do we have any representation here for, for the Ecorus River Rouge area? We have some of the same, well, but I mean, any of our reps or some-
This won't, this won't cross over to Ecorus, this is just Detroit.
I know, but we were invited to the meeting for the same issues. We got chickens, we got groundhogs, we got, I think it's some pigs up there on out of drive somewhere. So we have the same problem. My question was this, and maybe no one has asked it for Detroit, maybe it applies to Ecorus too. What is the ordinance? What does it say? You can or cannot have stuff within the city limits? What is the ordinance? Can someone tell me that?
So the animals that we're talking about are prohibited currently?
They're pro-
Currently, correct.
We call, they call. If they're prohibited, when you call and you go out and you see them, you remove them. None of that has ever been done. I got chickens that take a walk up and down my street. They ended up in my backyard, I don't have chickens. Roosters crow at four o'clock. My parents were rural people, country people. They crow at four o'clock, they crow at six, they crow again at two in the morn, in the afternoon, they crow again about five or six o'clock. If it's prohibited, the or, the law is not being followed through, whether it be Ecorus, River Rouge, or southwest Detroit. So they're not doing their job. If we speed, the police stops us, you give me a ticket, they're doing their job, but you won't get the chickens or the groundhogs or the whatever else is out there.
Groundhogs, again, as I mentioned, are, are wildlife. All right, so we're going to go into the presentation, and I know folk, I, I see it, but I promise you, we're not leaving, we're not going anywhere. But we have individuals that we have from not just here in the city of Detroit, but others in other places that are doing this. When folks said that we need acres, they're here to show you that we don't need acres for that. It's really about the individual, just like in a household with a parent, just like when you talk about anywhere else, the individual, just some individual responsibility that has to be a part of this. We can create laws all we want, we can create levels of enforcement all we want, but there's some level of, of, of us that have to maintain us. And we're also working on another, a guild that we want to talk about afterwards, but we'll get to that later. Josh?
All right, so as Pro Tem mentioned, we have some special guests here, but we also have some special guests on Zoom, folks that have graciously given their time to talk about their experience of chicken keeping, duck keeping, and bee keeping in cities including Baltimore, Maryland, Washington DC, and then all the way out in Seattle, Washington as well. So first, I'd like to introduce two folks in the room, Ms. Tiffany Pilsen and Mr. Mark Covington. If you wouldn't mind coming up, please, and giving them a round of applause. They've, they've come out today. They come out today for their time. So as we're queuing up the folks that are coming on Zoom, I'll introduce Ms. Pilsen and Mr. Covington. So first, Ms. Pilsen, who is a lifelong City of Detroit resident and a product of the Detroit public school system. She currently owns ten parcels of land in District One and is farming on approximately 5.5 of those parcels. She began farming and keeping chickens because she noticed the need for fresh food in her community and because of the lack of accessible grocery stores. So that's Ms. Pilsen. Mr. Covington is a lifelong Detroit resident as well in the city's, uh, city airport neighborhood on the east side, the city's east side. And Mr. Covington has been, oh, city's east side, okay, our east side love. Little B-side love. Mr. Covington has been a beekeeper for ten years and a chicken keeper for fourteen years. He's also the founder of the Georgia Street Community Gardener Farm and the Collective, which provides residents with health, health education, leadership resources, protection, and rebuilding and sustaining the community. So again, Ms. Pilsen and Mr. Covington. And then via Zoom, if we move them over, I'll, I'll, as they're getting queued up, I'll read their bios. We have Ms. Dahlia Monterosso, who is also known as the president of Chickenlandia. And she is a backyard chicken educator, content creator, and an author herself. And when she's not teaching in-person classes or doing seminars on chicken keeping, you can also find her on her popular YouTube channel, Welcome to Chickenlandia, which is a top-rated podcast as well. And then also, we have Mr. Charles DeBarber, and he's an animal husbandry coordinator at the Filbert Street Garden in Baltimore City, in Baltimore, Maryland. He manages the largest bee yard in the city of, of Baltimore, excuse me, and cares for over forty fowl, forty chickens. And Mr. DeBarber is a regional subject manager, subject expert, excuse me, on urban, uh, urban keeping issues, urban, uh- keeping issues, urban animal keeping issues, pardon me. No, so we have, these folks to my left are from Detroit, but we wanted to invite folks from other cities, Washington DC and Baltimore, Maryland as well. We're inviting them, we want to get their perspective, we want to get their perspective as well. All right, next, and last but not least, we have Ms. Antoinette Burnham, or affectionately known as Ms. Toni Burnham. She's the founder and past president of the DC Beekeepers Alliance, and it's a beekeeping association in Washington DC. And Ms. Burnham has been a beekeeper for eighteen years and runs over forty colonies in Washington DC and public utilities, urban farms, arboretums, and government sites. So as we queue them up, then as they're getting ready, actually, what we can do, because we have Ms. Pilsen and Mr. Covington first, if you wouldn't mind, we'll start with a question for you all. What? Okay, that's all right. So, and, yes, and, yes. And we'll keep this free flowing. I'll ask questions, but I know Ms. Pilsen and Mr. Covington can also address questions that have come in the room. So first, Ms. Pilsen, I'll let you address what you've heard thus far.
Well, first of all, I like to say hi to everybody. Thanks for coming. And I had a chance to sit in the back of the room and, you know, catch the vibe, hear what was asked, hear some of the background conversations and everything, and I can totally understand where all of you are coming from. Animals aren't irresponsible, that's the first thing I want to say, no matter what the animal is. People are irresponsible. And that's, that's anywhere, that's in a rural area, that's in the city. Second of all, I grew up in the Brewster Projects. Never in a million years would I have thought that I was going to be raising food or keeping chickens. There is nothing country about me. I am a straight-up city Detroit girl. I grew up off the river. However, I saw the need in my community for access to fresh, healthy food. There are no major grocery stores, even though Myers is in my neighborhood, there are people who do not have access. And people can say, well, you can get in your car and go to the club and go wherever you want to go. The fact of the matter is, is that there are children, probably your children, your grandchildren, nieces and nephews, who are not getting fresh, healthy food every day. And even though they're not my kids, my kids are doing great. They're our future, and they need to be educated and given fresh, healthy food choices instead of buying the hot Cheetos, the Slim Jims, and the Capri Suns from the gas stations and the grocery stores. That's why I got into keeping, into keeping the food. I'm a responsible person, so you're not going to see my chickens walking down the street. They're going to be where I am. And I don't know about anybody else's animals, but all of my animals are cool because they're taking on my personality. Seriously, like, I got rid of the roosters, but even the roosters that I had took on my personality, they didn't crow at four o'clock in the morning. They tried to, but I had to get with them and let them know that that's not what we doing, we not crowing at four o'clock in the morning. And it worked. They didn't start crowing till five, till after six. And they didn't crow all day long. So again, animals aren't irresponsible, people are. The other thing that I want to say is that if you took all the chickens, ducks, and whatever animals that most people are complaining about, the ones that we, out of the picture, Detroit would still have major problems. Our neighborhoods, I cleaned up our neighborhood by getting a farm. I took vacant lots that were rat-rotting and infested with trash and all kind of nasty yuckiness, and most of the farmers that I know have taken those vacant lands that nobody wanted, that were around being a nuisance, and taken them and turned them into productive growth spaces. I just think everybody ought to try to reconsider some of the things that you're angry about and that you're complaining about, that there's a bigger picture. It just, it just really is. It's not a bunch of us just, we like chickens, we got chickens, so we want chickens, and we want y'all to allow us to have chickens. It's a method to some of the madness, and we not all irresponsible either.
Thank you, Ms. Pilsen, thank you. And we've been joined by our Zoom guests as well. So we have Ms. Burnham, and we have Ms. Monteroso, excuse me. So for you both, I know you all were tuning in, listening to the comments, we're going to keep her free flowing. Is there anything that you would like to share about your experience with chicken, duck, or beekeeping as well, based on the comments you've heard? Think you have to unmute yourself there? Okay, in the meantime, we're not able to hear you in the room right now, but while we're figuring that out, Mr. Covington, is there anything that you would like to add on with Ms. Pilsen? We do have some chickens in the room, and they're Mr. Covington's, he's graciously brought them in. Is there anything you would like to share and respond to from our participants today?
Well, I'd like to say that I agree. I've been in my neighborhood on Georgia Street my whole life. If any of my- Testing. So I've been on Georgia Street my whole life. If any of my neighborhoods had, anybody, if they'd have come to me fourteen years ago and said, hey, Mark, I do not like you keeping chickens, my chickens would not be here to this day. My bees, the same thing. They actually come and ask for eggs. I've yet to have anybody ask for a chicken to be put into the frying pan or the pot, but, I mean, I engage my neighborhood. I started Georgia Street Community Collective by mistake because I wanted to clean up some vacant lots. I lost my job, had to move back home with my grandmother from around the corner. And the lots were, you know, people had started dumping garbage on it, I wanted to clean them up. But when I started cleaning them up, I said, if I do it, all they're going to do is dump on it again. And then I said, well, I'll plant a couple rows of vegetables, you know, maybe, and plant some flowers, make it look nice, people stopped dumping on it. At that time, we had some seniors right on the corner, they came out and said that it would be nice if they come out and pick some vegetables, but, and it would help them supplement their budgets. But the soil that we were growing in was horrible. I took some classes, they said chicken poop was good in source for compost, put nitrogen in the compost. I said, ooh, maybe I need to compost some chicken manure. So I got some chickens. But that first summer in 2008, I started working with kids in the neighborhood. When I got my first baby chickens, the chicks, the kids fell in love with them, and that was my way of keeping the kids engaged all these years. That's, you know, I show them chickens, you know? I teach kids how to keep bees, you know, and they fell in love with them, because that was my way of engaging them. But I've never had a chicken running down the street on Georgia. Nobody could ever say they saw one of my chickens, you know? So I, but like, like she was saying, it's the responsible, like, you can't walk past our farm and smell chickens. Like, we don't have extra rats, I mean, the whole city got rats. You know, there's no increase, there's never been any increase. I got cameras because we work with compost, and I want to make sure that my neighbors don't have anything that's going to come down on them because of me. So.
So we will have questions, we will have questions, but we do want our folks via Zoom. Their audio should be working now. Can you hear us? And, or, can we hear you? Still pretty low, and we see Mr. DeBarber as well. Okay, let's have another test. No, we'll keep him, we'll keep him, keep him here. All right, but while we're here, again, for Mr. Covington and Ms. Pilsen, can you address spacing? How much space is needed for beekeeping? How much space do you truly need for beekeeping, or chicken keeping, or duck keeping?
So my beehives are like, I would say about fifteen feet from a sidewalk, and there's still people in my neighborhood that don't know I have bees. So when I can be standing out there working the bees in my suit, and matter of fact, the other day, a lady that I've been knowing almost my whole life, she literally was driving past, she stopped because she saw me with my suit on, and she was like, you a beekeeper? And I was like, yeah. She was like, when you started that? I was like, ten years ago. You know, so, I mean, it's, again, it's the way you do it, and people need to be educated before they can even start, they should be educated, I feel, before they even start doing it. But also engage in your neighbors. If your neighbor don't want it, you should not be doing it, and that's the way I feel.
Well, I've been stung a lot of times, but never by a honeybee. Generally speaking, a honeybee is not going to sting you unless you are doing something and they're defending themselves. Most of the stings that people are referring to, because Michigan has over two hundred species of bees, first of all, are probably everything but a honeybee. Bumblebees and wasps, believe it or not, I know we all smart, but a lot of us mix wasps up with bees. A honeybee is just, they have a job to do. They only live for about thirty days. They're on a mission to pollinate, get it back to their home, and keep it moving. They not too much bothering with y'all, they in y'all flowers. They not, they not the ones you flagging down. As far as how much space is needed, well, unless you opening up a zoo, you shouldn't need that much, a whole lot of space. Chickens don't take up a whole lot of space unless you have a ton of them, and neither do the bees. So like they mentioned in my introduction, I have ten parcels. I farm on about five and a half of those parcels, and I don't have any problems. I'm a responsible, clean person, so.
All right, thank you. All right, take three. For our Zoom participants, can we hear you? Working on our-
I hope so. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Mr. DeBarber, can we hear you? All right, two out of three, we're going to get there.
He's muted.
Oh, he's, all right, he's muted. Mr. DeBarber? All right, well, we have Ms. Burnham, and we have other participants. Can you both, for right now, as Mr. DeBarber gets set up, speak about the spacing requirements, but also feel free to respond to anything you've heard thus far? We know you've been listening throughout this entire meeting.
In Washington DC, believe it or not, our population is about the same as Detroit's, and I think that our housing spaces are very similar as well. Your law is actually slightly more restrictive than what we have in DC. In DC, almost any parcel of land would allow four beehives. So I would, what I would remark on is, I think that your legislators are trying to be pretty careful about this. Beekeeping has been legal in Washington DC for a little over ten years right now. And what I would say when I hear you folks speak is, you're right, it's our obligation to help make this strange thing understood, to explain ourselves and to provide community service to the extent that we're asking for your patience with having us around. I can tell you, at this time in Washington DC of the year, I mean, we are actually pretty much a resource to the community in helping them identify things like, what is that bug that's in my house, or in my bushes, or in the ground? And it's, right now, it's a hundred percent yellow jackets and hornets. And we're here, because we have a law and because we have rules, we have a clear path for how to do it right, and it's important that we do do it right, and it's important that our community make sure we do it right. And we know we owe you, as fellow members of your community, information and service, and that's part of our ethic here.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Monteroso, would you care to respond or build on Ms. Burnham's?
Well, I think everyone is bringing up great points, and I don't, you know, I mean, everyone's bringing up really important points. I do want to say that I feel a lot, I feel like a lot of the problems that people are bringing up can be significantly helped by putting clear regulations in place. I think that we need to bring these things into the light of day. Right now, it's illegal, so there's people doing things that are illegal, and when they're doing that, it's just not, you're not able to get to control it as well as you could is it, you know, if you don't have good regulations in place. So, you know, in the city I live in, we have way less regulation than what you're talking about today. But it's just really not a problem, and like, it's really treated the same as like a nuisance dog. But I think, you know, the main thing is to get education out there. I always say, like, if there's a problem, if there's a problem with rats, if there's a problem with smell, these are, these are things that I hear about all the time. But they are very easy to handle with the right education, the right community outreach. These are easy problems to handle, but we have to bring it into the light of day and have regulations put in place so that they can be handled. And right now, it's like chaos, and what people are describing is chaos. They're experiencing chaos, and I do not blame anyone for being upset about that. But if we can, like, communicate about it, come up with a plan, this is already happening, and, you know, make it to where it's not illegal so that we can deal with it in a way that works for everybody and not just for the people who are currently breaking the law, actually. So that's, you know, that's what I think. I really feel like, you know, when I think about chicken keeping, it is a connection with nature that I have that I think is so important, and that became very clear to me in 2020, when a lot of people were confined to their homes. If they didn't have a yard, they just, they didn't even have access to nature during that time, and I realized how lucky I was to have that ritual every day, to have that access to nutrient-dense food, and that so many people don't have that. So to me, it's a class issue, too. And I really, I mean, I wrote a book called Let's All Keep Chickens, because I really think that we should all be doing this, and we will have to make some level of sacrifice, but we're talking about the future of our communities, we're talking about our children's future, this is about sustainability. So if we look at the big picture, then I think it becomes more clear why this would benefit our communities. And, you know, during, during the whole COVID lockdown thing, I was in my neighborhood, I had eggs, and I gave everybody eggs, so I did feed my neighborhood. I did. It is possible, we can have community chickens, we can feed neighborhoods this way. So I just want to validate everybody's concerns, but also say that we can't address those concerns when there's chaos going on. So let's bring some organization to it, some education to it, some community outreach, and I think that that is going to help a lot.
Thank you both. Mr. DeBarber, because I, how are we now?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, we can hear you. All right. So feel free, if you'd like to talk about, again, the spacing, what's needed for your community, I know you're in Baltimore, Maryland. When we spoke, there are lots and lots of similarities around space between both the Detroit and Baltimore communities. Could you share a little bit about that, please?
Roger, could I pivot a little bit off of her and do a quick little introduction? I don't mean to talk anyone's ear off.
Okay, just a brief one, sure, and then the spacing, yep, go right ahead.
My name is Charles DeBarber, I'm an animal caretaker here in Baltimore City. Work at the Filbert Street Garden, which is very similar to the community garden that Mr. Covington runs, where we're just there to feed the community, about thirty-eight-hundred eggs a year, three tons of produce goes right to our curbside pantry, one hundred percent of it's donated. We have about forty-five chickens on property, we have the largest bee yard in Baltimore City with thirty-five hives, we have eleven miniature goats and two sheep. That's all on just shy of an acre, and can't smell it. Like, because if you can smell those animals, it means they're, you either have too many of them, or they're not taken care of properly, or both. And there's a lot of things I can say positive and negative about each one of the animals you're considering, and tonight, I'll answer any questions specifically that you have about ducks or bees, but you have right next to me Toni, who is our DC counterpart, and she's forgotten more about bees than I'll ever know, even after almost a decade of beekeeping now. But you guys are where we were about twelve years ago. About twelve years ago, it was chaos here in Baltimore City, because they banned most of these animals in the late eighties. It was mostly to essentially get rid of petting zoos and things like that. So they banned pretty much everything, and they opened up the exotic reg, we had a lot of concerns, especially about 2011, 2012, and a lot of people are doing their own thing. And when people do their own thing, one, there's no education about how to properly take care of these animals, because everyone's acting in a vacuum, there's no local courses on animal husbandry, there's no support for it on top of it, because we can't work together and communicate. I can say, in these eleven years since they opened things up, animal cruelty cases plummeted. We have a great relationship with Animal Control, with Sharon and the Department of Health. We also have a couple exemptions, which are great compromises as well. One to consider is that community gardens, we have a- One to consider is that community gardens, we have a community garden exemption. If you're a 501(c)(3) or fall under one, and you work with Animal Control and have an educational purpose, like, they can actually allow more animals, or some different types of them. I would consider some of that, if you, one, as a city, to have more of a, more of a community garden approach to it. I would say that having a handful of chickens in the rakes that I've seen on there, they're actually very conservative. A lot of the cities have much more open ones, which I wouldn't agree with, because I think they're too small for poultry. These ones are actually quite generous, even for bees. As Toni said, like, you could have four hives on 2,000 square feet here in Baltimore City. And I can even say, just for the bees, we have 35 hives right in the back, the largest one in Baltimore City. Our neighbors wouldn't even know if we, for many years, didn't know we had them until we pulled a lot of the brush off the fences. Like, because they spread out over a two-mile radius every day. So they're not all congregated in one area. As far as some of the questions that went out there, there were a lot of really good ones. And the first thing I want to emphasize is that gentleman that said, you feel your district is a very ignored place in this city, I empathize with you. Curtis Bay in Brooklyn, we're right on the bottom tip of the city, and we feel that very often, we feel we get a little bit less services because of it. In fact, 4th of July weekend, that's where the Brooklyn home shooting was, just three blocks from our garden, that mass shooting. We are in a part of a terrible food desert. Our closest grocery store is a 45-minute walk, and that store is closing pretty soon. It's about to get further. Our closest library is a 35-minute walk, if you want to get a book or use internet. So our garden provides free Wi-Fi for the community. It's a community hub because of that. On top of it, we've actually become a place for a lot of neglected animals. I'm ashamed to say, we've had animals thrown over the fence to get ditched in our spot. We've had ducks and chickens especially. And a lot of my comments are both positive and negative about ducks. Ducks have a few perks, they're easier to contain than chickens, because they can't jump over things. They do make a heartier egg. They are better winter layers. But one, they provide a lot more manure, they are a little better at contaminating water, unfortunately. They're a little bit gross. I would only recommend them for like a community garden-type space, or somebody that has the right setup for them. On top of it, something to consider in your reg, you're missing is gender ratios. Because if you have two boys, they won't hurt each other. If you have two girls, they won't hurt each other. But if you have a boy, two boys and a girl, the boys will kill each other. So I would make sure that it's like three females for one.
Mr. DeBarber, yes. So, actually, for all of our participants, we appreciate everything you've shared. Please stay on with us. We want to get around the room real quick for a Q and A. And I see hands immediately. So again, Mr. Whitfield, seize your hand and has our microphone, so we can, the folks on Zoom can hear you as well.
Thank you, good evening. Everything that people said already. Teresa, I do know you. And everybody here is not in so-called southwest Detroit. This used to be called Delray. I'm from the west side, that they still try to call southwest Detroit. But this is an issue for all of us. We have chickens walking down the alley. We have roosters being kept in old trailers that's roosting all day. Now, this is my suggestion, Ms. Pilsen, right?
Yes, ma'am, Pilsen.
Pilsen, okay, and the gentleman next to him? Because you don't enforce anything in this city. Now, it's no problem with the ordinance, it's an enforcement. Because if you already been giving people citations in a city that did not, that this is against, why they get citations for chickens when they ain't supposed to have them? They should have been removed. The other thing is, now, I believe that Ms. Pilsen and the gentleman do a good job. Put them over this. Now, when she come out, because she got experience, and she could come out and say if this person can do it or not, all them beautiful pictures you showed us, the pigeon, I mean, chicken coops, these people are not going to have chicken coops. They letting these animals run all over their yard. I know it, I see it, and we don't want that. We not saying you can't have animals. It's many people in here have beautiful dogs that they keep in their house or their yard. It's the other people that's the problem. You cannot just put an ordinance out and expect that the people that's living here and already violating are going to do the right thing. So hire her and hire him to be the inspectors. They can't get a license until she say so, and he say so, and then she can come out, and I'll go for it. But I don't want all these people being able to just buy chicken, have stuff running all over the neighborhood, dogs, chickens, whatever it is. And I am an animal lover, but they are supposed to be contained. Thank you. And Teresa, I want to see you after this.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
Way to go, ma'am, way to go.
Thank you, Ms. Long. You have any job applications? It sounds like we need some for our next meeting. That's what it's sounding like.
I agree with her.
I do, too.
Not just because it's me.
Yeah, but first, we'll get to our next question. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Means. I grew up on.
I'm sorry, I, one sec, I'm sorry, folks. Just want to make sure we give our attention, please.
Hi, everyone, my name's Jennifer Means. I grew up spending summers on Electric Street down the way.
Is it Jennifer?
I just wanted to let you know that, dog, I forgot my point. But point is, is that if you get appointed to support this, I would be willing to volunteer my time as someone who is agriculture-based in business. And in my life, as far as heading up what that looks like, an important piece that's being missed here that people have touched on is the education process. If you offer a license, there should be some required training. So though I am pro the birds, I mean, the animals and everything like that, what is being proposed now to just educate neighbors, let them be able to take, partake in this, and the people who will have the licensing? So you're not just citing them, you're actually informing them. They may think they want to keep chickens and do wrong by the chickens, you know? So has, has that been considered, as what a training program looks like?
It has, yes, ma'am. And if I can, is it okay if I invite Ms. Wallace up really quick? Because she's been a trusted partner, along with Mr. Covington here, in conversations of what Pro-Tim mentioned around an animal keeper guild. And what this guild would be tasked with doing would be doing what, exactly what you just said, educating, informing, working on community relations with your neighbor to ensure that.
But also keeping it as a requirement.
Okay, all right. Again, we're in a proposed stage, so let's talk.
Hi, and thank you for, all of us being here, first of all. Yes, our voices are extremely important. I had the opportunity to be involved in this conversation when it started back in 2012 and 2013. And so the things that we're talking about today, when you take a close look at the details that are in the ordinance, you'll see they respond to many of the things that were asked then. I have a list here of comments from the previous meetings this year, and all of the things that have been talked about since we first started this. The intentionality behind this was very focused. Many of you probably know Catherine Lynch Underwood, who was a planner for our city for many, 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 many years. I worked alongside her when we looked at this ordinance. And what was done was, looked at the important things as the way the animals are kept, the way we are considered as citizens in our homes. So those two things were always front and center. What is the concern in the welfare of the animal, and then also what's the welfare of our homes? So as it far come to taking care for education, one of the things that the animal keepers told us, because we talked to the animal keepers in detail about this, and one of the things they told us most is important is education. You need to know how to do what you're doing well. I don't care if you got a dog, cat, bird, whatever, we all need to know how to do it well. And so that's one of the things that animal keepers lifted up most, is that we have to know how to care. So when you look at the regulations, you'll see even the spacing was based upon proper care for the animals. Flip it to the side of us as animal keepers potentially, and homeowners. Even the distances that you'll see on the maps were all about how close and how far away. How much room do the chickens and the ducks and the bees need? How much room do I need? It's my house. If I'm living in it, how far from my house, if I'm living in it, and how far from my neighbors? So all those things were really informed by conversations with people just like you. So the conversation has been going on. Councilmember Tate opened it up and said, it's been a while. So the educational pieces are really important. I was asked about the guild. So one of the recommendations, and Catherine, I wish Catherine were here, and we thank her for her many, many years of service, very, very intentional about how to approach things. So the guild is a, is an accountability organization. It's an organization for people who keep animals, for their neighbors, as well as people who advocate. And why have a guild? The purpose of the guild is so that we can set standards. Now, the ordinance is going to set some standards, and you've already heard that, what was it? Responsible, the people are responsible, not the animals? The guild is about us being responsible to one another. So if I'm having an issue, I'll pick on my friend Mark, because he is my friend. So if Mark is cutting up over there, and his chicken is roaming down the street, it never happens on Georgia Street, ever. If it happens, then me as another animal keeper, I'm going to check Mark. I'm going to check Mark. That's what the guild will help do, is we have some accountability as peers for one another on how we're doing something. So we're going to make sure that the training is proper. The animal keepers told us, tell people, please do not learn how to, how to do this on, on YouTube. YouTube is cool, it's got a lot of good stuff, but you need to learn how to do these things. And also to be able to be accountable to one another. So if somebody's not doing something proper, then I'd rather be checked. Folks say we want to check each other, and not necessarily always just wait for enforcement from outside. So how are we going to be responsible? So the animal keepers talked about the guild, what kind of roles they could play to help with the training, conversations with folks like Michigan State Extension, those folks that are doing this all over the world and the country, to help ensure we know how to do these things. So the guild is accountability first as citizens, as animal keepers, and as neighbors, and advocates for this, making sure that it is done well. That's the purpose of the guild.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. And I see we have the gentleman with Michigan gear, and then we were going to turn over to Rep. Carter, to my right.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I give you all the accolades. The presentation was beautiful, okay? You guys understand, you're trying to set forth an opportunity to make some changes. But I want to tell you, the reason you get the frustration from people from southwest Detroit, this is the only part of Detroit that's surrounded by five cities, okay? Now, we take care of our home. I moved from Rosedale Park to here. I take care, I invest in my property, take care of my neighbors and everything. They're telling you what's going on in the city within the last four or five years. They are totally violating. So how do you want, I mean, sometimes you have to look, if you want to sell something, you have to win people over. And first of all, I deal with seniors all the time. You have to learn to listen. You can push things down people's throat. But when you sit up and see that the violations around the homes and everything is already occurring, it's horrible. We're the only part, I'm telling you, yeah, we have police officers here, but we don't have a response time. We have the Miller Bridge, Fort Street Bridge, Jefferson Bridge, and then that freeway. When that Gordy Howe Bridge come, we should be excited about what's going to happen down this Fort Street Avenue. My son bought, he has a restaurant right down the street. You have people here who care about this city. I know our dear love mayor don't come down here. But, but you guys got to stand, we have a state rep to stand strong here. But when you want to win the people, you got to hear them. That violation, Mr. Mark, how you doing? I'm the kind of guy that will call you. And when something don't happen, you're not making it happen. I'm a deep in my church, so I deal with seniors all the time. But the reason you have the people over here in this part of southwest Detroit, we're a little different. It's not like on Burner, y'all made a whole lot of changes over there. We really need to feel that you care. I'm sorry, the fire department, they don't even know the streets over here. These streets are female names all the way down. So the chickens, I'm going to tell you, my neighbor, three doors down, he got a rooster. He grow quails. He got five dogs, but guess what? He's got his stuff sealed off, and it don't bother anyone. But you have too many people violating that now. You want to impress some people, let us know you're going to do it now. Y'all should be, Mr. Mark should be wondering where street and addresses. Show people you believe, and you're not just buffaloing us, okay? You got some pretty intelligent people out this way. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I appreciate your comment. And that's, that's why we're here. This is community meeting number three, and it's not the last. It's not the last. And we want to emphasize, this is proposed, proposed. We're taking all of this feedback. So I see Rep. Carter, yes.
Good evening, everybody. Couple things. I want you all to keep this same energy on a monthly basis when they have monthly meetings down here about this community. That's number one. Number two, 90% of the calls that, and I'm the chair of the Detroit Caucus, so all 23 senators and representatives are part of Detroit. 80% of the calls to our office are city issues. So I'm here because we need to know what's coming, what's being done. And you can have the best ordinance in the world, but if you don't have enforcement, if you don't have consequences, and if you don't have the manpower or the resources to do those things. So when I see this, I don't do emotional politics, you know? I know everybody needs to eat, everybody can, hell, we have gleaners and everybody come out here. But the reality is, people want a certain quality of life. And you cannot continue to have expectations that people are violating it already without no consequences. Why do you think we have speed bumps in the neighborhoods now? Because, no, people can't be everywhere, but people are people, and they're going to break rules. But there needs to be consequences, you know? I ride my bike through the neighborhood, many of you know that. And, and I'm trying to find the word to say what I see. The first thing is, we've got a lot of new neighbors that aren't good neighbors. That's the first thing. You know, fences all the way to the sidewalk. Now, now you've got people advertising that they do brake jobs in their yard. So before we get to a point, people need to know that things are going to be enforced to the letter of the law and have consequences. Nobody's anti-anything, but we're pro-compliance. So if we can get that done, I, I think you can get more people on your side. Because nobody's going to say, hey, I got chickens to feed my family. But if you got them running free, that's almost like a pit bull to me. It's open game.
So we're, we're. I was just going to say, but before we get to your question, I know we have Mr. Matifio. Did I pronounce you correctly?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right.
We have Michelle here that has a comment.
Yes, Representative Senator Carter said it all, and the gentleman right here is that, let Detroit know that you respect them. Detroit has been through a lot. We fought against Marathon. We've been here before with federal legislators. So, and a lot of times Detroit don't see the action that's being done. Everything is always pushed on Detroit. I know what we fought for, I know what I fought for with Marathon, and a lot of the things that are going, I went to Lansing going on in the city. But what I wanted to say is that, on the nursing side, we're dealing with avian influenza. And I'm in public health nursing, and what we see now, just like COVID, zoonotic infections. And if you know what that is, that means from animal to human to human, there's your pandemic, like COVID. So I've been dealing with that for years. And we're seeing avian flu, you got to wash your hands. Now, the chickens, and like Carter said, you could get people on board or whatever. But what I'm concerned with is that if people do not, if those chickens get the flu, not just H1N1, or a different type, which is influenza A, it will go onto that person from the animal to the person to person to person, and that's your problem. And right now, we're dealing, and I'm sitting in the hospital, we are starting, it's going to see the uptick in our flu cases. Influenza, I mean, I get the flu vaccine, but guess what? It's influenza, it's bird flu, chicken flu. That's our vaccine, that's what is mixed with the A. So that's what I'm concerned with. If you talk with the Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, have you spoke with CDC? Have you spoke with the United States Department of Agriculture? The departments that are dealing with the disease of the chickens and the flu. And I'm going to tell you right now, Detroiters are not good with vaccinations. Our seniors are, the 65 and older, are more mature adults, not seniors, are more mature adults. But if you have a outbreak, and you got avian flu and influenza A, you in trouble with the city. And this is what we're seeing now. So I just want to comment on that. So I just wanna comment on that. It should wait right now until you talk with these, uh, federal authorities about disease.
Start by saying, um, good evening, um, to my 48217 family, because I am 48217. I'm Stacy Ross, Legislative A, the council member at large Mary Waters. And like President Potem stated, this is a citywide, um, proposed ordinance. Councilmember Waters represents the entire, um, city of Detroit. If you oppose this proposed, um, ordinance, will you, and if you support it, will you please call us at 313-628-2363? Again, 313-628-23. And I, and I have a few questions. At this time, I'd like to ask a poll, yes? Yes, 313-628-2363, if you are in, in support or in opposition. Also, I'd like to take a poll at this time, 48217 residents that, that are in opposition.
Opposition is out.
Opposition, no.
No.
Say no.
48217 residents that are in support. Yes. Okay. Okay, so it looks like 48217 is strongly opposed. I will, I, and I will report that. Also, I have a couple of questions. One question, well, one is to Ms., um, to Ms. Pilsen and to Mr. Covington. Have you ever been ticketed?
No. Well, there wouldn't be a reason for me to get a ticket, because I haven't drawn, or my animal keeping hasn't drawn. In fact, if I wasn't up here telling you that, you wouldn't know that I had, that, that I had, um, any animals in my. In fact, there's people that own the cute little shoo-shoo, frou-frou, expensive dogs, um, that's doing more, that need to have the animal control on them little cute little dogs running around in neighborhoods, barking and pooping in people's yards.
And you have five point five parcels, right?
Then, then the animals that I keep.
You have five point five parcels.
No, I have more than five point five parcels.
What do you have?
I have ten.
My next question is to Mr., um, Hemp, Kump, the Director of Animal Control. You said there was a variety of animals within the city. What is the variety? What are the other animals?
Variety of animals, we have, we've found all kinds of things.
Such as?
We've had, we picked up goats, we picked up pigs, uh, got a couple horses. I, I don't personally know of any turkeys per se, but I'm sure. I'm sure we do, and I'll be happy to address that.
It's wild turkeys in the city that don't nobody even own.
And now, how are you handling that? And how are you handling that?
You're a member of another member's staff.
Yes.
We gotta keep it moving. We got other folks who have hands, and it's getting a little bit like.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Can we please address the bird flu? Um, excuse me. Can we please have the bird flu? Because that's a very legitimate concern. And as an animal keeper and a resident of the city of Detroit, I feel like that need to be, um, properly addressed by animal control.
Yes, ma'am. A couple of issues. One, just to make sure everybody understands, I handed out a card earlier, that's a personal number. If you wish to complain, if you wish to file a complaint, 922-DOGS, 313-922-DOGS is the number for a complaint. If you see someone that is mis, miskeeping, improperly handling animals at large, not 911. The police are not going to respond to a complaint of chickens. Call us. Our lines are recorded, just like the police is. So if there is an answer you get that is not satisfactory, a supervisor, myself, or Lori Sol, the Director of Animal Control, who handles the enforcement, can deal with that. We do liaise with the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. We do liaise with folks with the CDC, and we are well aware of avian influenza. The majority of those cases are not starting in any barnyard flocks. Those are brought in by wild birds. They may infect local flocks, but that's part of the reason that we want to make sure that we can track those and register them, if necessary, because we don't know where those flocks are. Right now, literally, pun intended, flying under the radar. If we get sick birds, we only find out about them when it's too late. And we can't isolate or make sure that our health and safety is being protected. So to address that, we are aware of it, we definitely work with all of those folks. If folks have a complaint, that 922-DOGS number is the number to call. If you call that, and you don't get what you think is an adequate response, then by all means, please call the number on the card that I gave you, my number, not the general office number, and we can address that. But it's not a situation where calling my number is going to get you a response at nine o'clock at night. Call that 922-DOGS, and we will respond to those. And again, happy to sit around and answer questions, but I just wanna put out one thing beyond that. We started out, when I started here in 2019, with five animal control officers, and there were over nine hundred calls for service pending. That means that there were nine hundred calls waiting for animal control to handle. Our response time has gone down from months to less than seventy-two hours in most cases for animal control complaints. We now have thirty total officers for investigations, twenty-three officers and seven investigators. That's up twenty-five. That came through the support of council and your elected officials by budgeting and appropriating it. We have the largest animal control agency in the state. We beat out Lansing and every other jurisdiction, period. There is no larger agency. We do enforce, and we are out there actively doing it, but we have to get the call to the right agency about the right thing. We are writing tickets, we are confiscating animals. Where there is a violation and there are improper handling, they're gone. And again, I'll be happy, if someone wants to look at my cell phone, I'll show you the roosters that I had in the shelter for last week. It's, it's not pretty, and I understand what everybody's saying. Please understand, the folks here, we are working diligently to help you out. And if you get that call and you're not getting the service, please, that's when you call me, and we'll make sure that you get addressed. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Before, before we get to our next question, I know Ms. Pilsen is on a tight timeline, we agree, appreciate her time with us. We're gonna, we're gonna stick here, we're not going anywhere, so Ms. Pilsen.
I'm, I, um, I'm foregoing, I'm gonna stay with, with, with the people. Because this, this is, this, I'm gonna stay. I'm, I'm, I had another important meeting, but I'm gonna stay here with y'all, because this not just a southwest issue, or, or, I, I wouldn't even say an issue, but this is not just affect southwest Detroit. This is Detroit as a whole, us as a city, um, ordeal, so.
Okay, before, before we get to the next question, we want to kinda stack our participants. By that, I mean, uh, who's the firsthand we have here? Okay, one, and then, one, one moment. No one over here? Okay, so one, two, two, because we wanna hear from, from new folks as well, too. Okay, so one, and then who is the next one? Okay, uh, two, and then, well, three, okay. Yes, ma'am, we'll still, we'll go one, two, three, just to start, yes. Flo, yours.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say, um, I appreciate you guys who have plenty of property to, uh, house your animals. This is southwest Detroit, and we do not have room for farms. We have no farms out here in southwest Detroit. I walked down, I mean, walked, I was driving down Annabelle not long ago, and here comes two roosters walking across the street. And I'm like, what the heck? Somebody dropped my car down in another country? So I parked my car and got out to take, uh, to take a picture. And so all of a sudden, I hear this voice, "Don't you mess with my birds." And it scared the mess out of me. I'm looking all around, because I'm on, he walked on one side, uh, apartment, senior apartment building over there. So you telling me that somebody in the senior apartment building got two, uh, roosters living up in there now? Because they walked right on across the street, walked right on up there to the apartment building, two red roosters. And I took pictures of it, too. But back to this, back to the, uh, the beginning of what I was saying, we don't have, uh, the, we don't have the land out here to house animals. And not only the, uh, the, the, the bird, the chickens and the roosters, but the possums and the rabbits and the pigs and the goats, this is not farmland. This is residential area, and that's the way we need to keep it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next one, yes, Ms. Woodrow.
Hi, um, I am, I'm in 48208, but I wanted to come tonight because this is something that we're going to hear at a local neighborhood meeting tomorrow, and I wanted to learn a bit more about it, um, before we heard tomorrow. Um, I'm in, I'm in Woodbridge, so we're, we're kinda between, you know, okay. So I'm wondering, in terms of obtaining a license and remaining compliant, Jennifer, you raised a concern that I had as well, and Ms. Wallace touched on it, and that's regarding education. And I really feel that there needs to be a required educational component before people can receive a license, and that there should probably be an inspection of the coop or the facility before that license is finalized as well. And possibly annually, to ensure that they remain in compliance. And if the license fee needs to increase to reflect that, then it should. Because that may be the only point where enforcement can occur. You have heard plainly tonight that nobody here has confidence in the ability of, of really any department in the city to enforce bylaws as they exist. So I think that that needs to be something that's built in strongly. I also wonder if there is going to be a cap on the total number of licenses issued in the city or in a neighborhood. Um, I think that would be something that should be considered, and whether there is a minimum lot size or spacing requirement. Thirty feet from a house, this room is more than thirty feet. That is not a lot of room. I am someone who has lived next to chickens before, and they were well-kept, and it was still an issue, with noise, with smell, and with vermin. So it will be an issue. Thank you.
Hi. Okay, my concern is, this presentation, to me, seems a little late. We have already had people moved in, brought chickens, the high fences and everything, and we're against it. And now you all wanna come with a ordinance to increase it? This is the city, not the farm. We don't have the space or the lot size for that.
I know it's indicated that we're late. This is actually on the front end. We've been working on this for, for ten years right now. So I didn't dump it on you. What I'm doing is trying to regulate it. But I'm, I'm, again, I, I can only control what I can control. And I understand folks have, have feelings, but I can control what I can control. Understand this. I was als, I'm also the, the, the council member who sponsored the, uh, community garden ordinance. And I know it don't sound like a big deal, does it? Hold on, hold on. Before I sponsored the ordinance, these community gardens that everybody have, they were illegal. Here's what I'm saying. They were illegal. But what I did was, I responded. And part of our role is to respond to the community. If we see that, uh, there's a trend that's happening, and we're not talking about scaffolds, people are just trying to do things illegal. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That is not what we did. That is not what we did, that is not what we did. Ms. Landry, that's not what we did. I love you to life, but that's not what we did. No, we did not do that. That's not what happened. If you wanna talk about it, we can talk about it, but that's not what happened, Ms. Landry. So again, we have to look at the trends that are happening within our city. We have to look at what, how, how residents in our city, again, old residents who've been here, legacy Detroiters like myself, new Detroiters who are coming in as well. This is a mixture. We have to respond to everyone. Those who are against it as well, your voice counts too. But we can't just say that just because you don't want it, it now cannot happen within the city of Detroit. This is why we're having this conversation, y'all. I have, I have neighbors who want them as well, in my own neighborhood.
Can I add? Good evening. My name is Kim Somerville. And according, uh, what's going on now, I wanna know what's gonna happen now. You have a, a section, an ordinance, section six dash one dash three, that says you're not supposed to have this kind of stuff now. What are you doing right now? Because it's illegal. As of right now, it's illegal to have those chickens, those hens, those.
So the director just said, give him the information. This is, and you can't, as far as what we're doing as a city, he said, give him the information, and he will send out inspectors to investigate. That's all we can do at this point today, right now. And he's talked about, he's mentioned, he has photos of animals that they confiscated already. I can tell you, I've had some, and I don't wanna say it too loud, because my neighbors might be, might be watching, but I've had some confiscated as well, for that same reason. Roosters are not acceptable. So we can't, I know we pick and choose, but again, if it's illegal, it's illegal, correct? All right. Next question, please.
Can I please address the avian influenza question?
Sure, if you can briefly.
Were you responding to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanna talk really quickly about the avian influenza question, because I think that's a really important question, and it's important to have good information about that. I do wanna say that instances of humans getting avian influenza from chickens is extremely rare across the world. It happened, it possibly happened, they don't know for sure, one time last year, and it happened in a factory farm. And the single biggest thing that is putting us at risk for, for avian influenza going into the human population is factory farms. So I just really think that, you know, this is again, putting something into perspective. Like, if we want less factory farms, we're going to have to make some concessions in our daily lives, not to the point to where, you know, we, we have a, a lesser value of life. Like, we don't want that, we wanna have a good value of life. But the reality is, is that the status quo is putting us in danger. And I think Detroit can be the inspiration for the rest of the country to show how we can bring chickens into the city in a way that is well-controlled, in a way to where, you know, everybody can live in harmony together and have less factory farms, because that is putting us in danger. That is where the real danger is coming from. So, that's what I wanna say.
Thank you so much. All right, next question, please.
Good evening. I have one question. If those chickens are illegal, how come they haven't been confiscated? We have so many.
Is that what you wanna happen right now? You wanna confiscate the chickens right now? I'm, I'm, so, so again.
The, what I'm saying is.
Aw, come on, ladies.
Uh, no, what I'm saying is, you got a whole bunch of people that are breaking the law. Take care of them first. Get them in line. I'm not talking about, I was making the point. We got, we got chickens crossing the street, we got all kinds of stuff going on. Take care of that business first, before you start another, uh, ordinance and another agenda. Because I wanna know, the question is, I got, what is the agenda? What, why are you doing this? What, uh, and it's not all of a sudden.
It's not all of a sudden, we've been working on this for ten years. And part of the reason why, so, so, we've been working on this for ten years. And I'll give you an example of why it has taken this long. Part of it was personnel change. So Mark is here, we have now stability within Animal Care and Control, but we've had over the years, and it almost seemed like every year was a different individual sitting in that seat. And every time a new person came in, we had to go back over, educate them, they had other things they wanna add or take out within the ordinance. And then to be honest with you, and here again, a transparent moment, when, when we got it to the point where it was ready to go, it was election time. And so I don't mind taking the questions as the sponsor of the ordinance. If folks agree with it or disagree with it, I will take whatever comes my way. That is our role, our responsibility. But I did not wanna put any other, uh, uh, members who are running for office to be in a position where they have to answer about animals, when this is not the biggest issue. when this is not the biggest issue that we have in the city of Detroit. We're talking about the housing, we're talking about all those issues, and we're still working on each one of those issues, but we don't stop working on other things just because we haven't fixed all of city's problems. Next question, please.
Uh, I, I just have this to say. Border raised out here, parents moved out here when I was ten days old, okay? I know what a farm is. Why? Because they came from one in Missouri, all right? Missouri's town, nine hundred and fifty people, okay? Had farms, farms. Now, it's small farm, okay, but it's a farm just the same. On average, twelve to thirteen hogs, fifteen cows, that's small, forty chickens. But my grandparents earned their money by, oh, Jesus, killing chickens Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays by the truckload, a pickup truck, okay? You got three big black kettles. That chicken gets his neck cut first, and he gets dipped. He's dipped in the next one, and the feathers start to come off, all right? We're not looking for that out here. My grandma, my grandparents had a wonderful farm, but we don't want farm. It's a backyard, and if it's not as big as Mont Twain, where the school used to be, don't even try it. Backyard, hell no, no!
So I think we need to still keep in mind, that's why it was important for us to talk apples and apples, and not apples and oranges. We're talking eight, a total of eight. We're not talking about a factory. We're talking about a collection of eight, up to eight. We have a no right here. Yes, ma'am. So we'll have a no. We're, we're listening to you. We're taking it in. Thank you.
All right. My name is Pamela Carter, and I've lived out here all my life. I stay on Apple Street. I have people that I know on Deacon and Bastard. I truly believe in taking care of my community. But I know this for a fact. Around the corner, there's a, um, house, you say it five. They have twelve chickens and a rooster. He had it, uh, next to the lot, which is, now, I'll get a ticket. Now, I have to keep my alley clean. He's on property I don't even think that they bought, that is attached to the house. And he had a chicken coop, but I think some of the neighbors was complaining about the rooster, so he put it behind the house. So I just feel like this, I know if they're not owners on the property, why are you on that lot that might have moved it behind the house? And I'm not trying to be mean, because you have a lot of people that don't keep up their property. They have kids that not even in school. So I just, I, I, I'm glad I came. I'm glad I got Mark's number, because I will be calling. And I have reported this several times, because I just couldn't believe my eyes. Because I do look out for my community, because if I see cars that are abandoned, I'm calling and reporting. Because I truly have nothing but time. I'm retired.
Thank you.
So I'll be going home.
Thank you so much. Thank you, and we appreciate you for it. The next person, yes.
Hi, my name is Emma Mullins. I live at 12831 Corbin, 48217. We have, um, five turkeys that live behind my house, that take their stroll twice a day. They walk out there at seven thirty every morning, then in the afternoon, they take their other stroll. They have a rooster that crows at three thirty in the morning, and then again around five thirty, and then at nine thirty at night. Moved into the community, and they brought these things with them. So when is something going to be said or done, or a citation did about that?
Yep, so, we're going to make sure that we have, we're going to make sure you get the information right. That's, that's all we're asking at this point. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, good evening, and thank you, everyone, for coming and supporting. And you young people, I'm very proud of you, very proud of your accomplishments. But my main question is, does this add value to our neighborhood? Or is this devaluing our neighborhood? May I finish, please? I've been very patient and listened to everyone. But again, um, we, we don't have police activity. It takes at least fifteen to twenty minutes for a police to come for a crime of, of violence, of violence. And this is important about the chickens and the pigs and this and that.
No pigs, no pigs.
Okay, well, whatever, wildlife or main stock.
Because I don't want pig pigs.
My parents, when they migrated in 48217, that's what went on. And we have strived very, very hard and very diligent to build our 48217 community, and we are the overlooked. This area is overlooked. Again, we don't have a police that comes immediately for violent crimes. And it, it's not very nice to wake up that the chickens have more rights than the taxpayers, because, oh, yes, let me just say this, if I may. I called the police, and everyone laughed. I, they said, why are you doing that? I said, because the, the people aren't containing their chickens. I'm not saying you don't, can't have things, but kind of now I am. But, uh, when you block and prohibit the school bus and traffic, we do call animal control, they do come out, and they say, we can't do anything for you. Well, why you come? We've had many meetings, ten years of meetings, more than that. But again, if it doesn't add value to our community, we don't want it. Take it somewhere else. Because when we, these are our legacies of our families, okay? And we've invested a lot of money in, uh, uh, in our homes and fixing them up. And if something doesn't add value, we don't need any more devaluing of all these major corporations, and we are the worst, uh, area code with the worst environmental problems. So do we need any more? We don't need anything else added to us.
Excuse me, I, I would like to address that, and I appreciate, thank you for the compliment, ma'am. Um, the network of, uh, urban farmers that I'm involved with-
The real network.
The real network of, of, of us. Now, I don't know who y'all live by that got, first of all, roosters that's crowing at three o'clock in the morning. That would be in the pot if they was at my house. That's too early. I ain't up that early. Turkeys and taking strolls and all that, we don't know nothing about that. What I can tell you, though, is that I live in Brightmore. And although Brightmore may not have experienced some of the things that you guys have experienced in 48217, it had a history and abandonment as well. When I bought my property, no one wanted to live down there, and I do mean no one. In 2017, when I bought my house, there was no one there. There was nothing but trash, filth, overgrowth, and everything. The square footage for my house was valued at less than twenty dollars per square foot. Now, hear me out real quick. I bought that land with the help of the Lord. I'm not taking no credit from, from the Father. I cleaned that land up, I spent all of my savings, cut down everything, cleaned up everything, started planting stuff. This is no exaggeration. The house next door to me, which all of them were vacant, and on the demo list when I came, just sold in May for sixty-five thousand dollars, seven, almost seventy dollars per square foot. And when I tell you didn't nobody want to be down there, my family looked at me like I was crazy when I brought them over there and showed them that, that land. And so, like I was saying, the farmers that's in my network, and we are spread out all over the city of Detroit, have taken the neglected and abandoned, blighted, nasty, and I do mean nasty, lots that were forgotten about, didn't nobody want to be there, vacant houses that was run down, no windows, rats, roaches, and everything else in them, cleaned them up, and are, are turning them into productive spaces to help cure food insecurities in our communities. And I don't mean no offense, I love all you black, you beautiful people, but I have not heard any of you all acknowledge or address the fact that it's full scarcity in our neighborhoods, especially since Farmer Jacks left the city. I, I didn't, I didn't hear not one person, not, not, not one person say anything about that. And I can guarantee you, it's going to happen again. Some of y'all going to need some food one day, and going to be looking for some of us.
You got one over there?
Thank you. I live in the 48217. I have two homes and a vacant lot. And I applaud you all because you are responsible owners, not just for your pets, but you have done development on your property. 48217, people didn't move out here to move into the country. They moved out here because they wanted a community. And when they first came out here, everything was just bound. Everybody knew everybody, everybody shared. You had vegetables, you gave it to this neighbor, you gave it to that neighbor. But as people start dying out, and other people start integrating our community, other things start becoming acceptable, and that's not the way we were brought up. So most of the people that are rooted and remain here in the 48217 and carry on the traditions of what our parents and our grandparents have brought us up, this is what we're fighting for. We live in the dogleg part of the city. When I worked for the Michigan Chronicle, we didn't have anybody coming out here. And then when we started talking about them, then they started coming out only during election time to see us. Nobody cared about us, nobody wanted to really deal with us. And at the same token, this was a solid community. Just about every household, you could say, at least had sixty thousand dollars, but we were forgotten about. So when we talk about the chickens, the bees, the ducks, we say no. But apparently, it seems like everybody else is still saying, we're going to bring them anyway. If you got the proper space for them, fine. I have a garage, two-story, with a loft in my house. That's my whole living area. We're out there, and Mr. Bates can confirm, we're out, we're just out there. We're out there with the grandkids, everybody. They come, they watch movies, we, you know, we dance, we laugh, we play. I don't want that crap next to me. And yes, I do have a dog. I've been a dog owner all my life. I clean up after my dog. My dog is a house dog. And our property has always been maintained. We took care of the lot that's behind us that we didn't own. We take care of the vacant lots that we don't own. We just spread out stuff to try to get rid of rotens, and no, nobody comes. When we reported something, yes, the police officer said, you know, I had to come all the way from the northwest side, because that bridge is down, that bridge is down, and this, that, and the other. So we are a forgotten community. But when we speak out, we're saying, listen to us. Like this gentleman said, listen to us. The government, and I'm not saying you all, but the government always try to give us what they think we want, instead of listening to what we're saying that we actually want and need. We are a solid community, and we're working to restore our community. We are dealing with breathing issues with Marathon. Marathon was part of what took place when Jeffrey School got tore down. And one thing about economic development, it, it's patient. It'll wait twenty years. It comes. Soon as you start building things up, it'll tear it down, and then there you are. If you want to have chickens, grow them, raise them, train them, whatever you want to do, in the proper area. I didn't move here. I wasn't brought up here. My grandparents didn't come here because they wanted chickens. They moved from the farm to the city, not to have the farm follow them.
Thank you. Thank you. Hold on, hold on, we, we, we have, we have, we have, no, hold on, hold on. Oh, I know, I'm, I know. Yes, ma'am. But they don't, but they would not be subject to this ordinance. That's the reality of it. But they're not subject to the ordinance. Let's be honest, they're not subject to the ordinance. So I want to hear from our Detroit folks, all right? So, um, yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi. Uh, I like what I've heard on both sides so far. Um, everybody is, is telling the truth and hear about everything. Um, but I think that the deal has already been, been, been done. Um, and the decision has already been made. It happened a long, 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 long time ago, like they planned everything for us for future. This is, and it's just upon us. It's upon us now. And in a minute, we're all, in a minute, we'll all be gone. It's for the next generation, you know? So it's just the time, it's, the time is here now, and it's upon us, of the changes that they already planned. They took the city water, uh, the pandemic came, you know, all that was planned, so-
I did that too.
All of the plans that, 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 that's, that's upon us, that's it. We'll all be gone, and they already made that deal happen a long time ago, so.
I would, I would say I beg to differ. I've been on the livestock committee since the beginning, and I, I think this is the more nervous I've ever been in ten years talking about, I'm sorry. Oh, no, no, I'm saying, no, I'm saying that I don't even think, I, I, I don't even think the powers that be really want this. Councilman Tate wants it. He supports it. I'm sorry.
All of a sudden, because they want that area, they wanted to go from Gross Point all the way down.
That's, that's my neighborhood.
Flooding, 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 houses that have never been flooded before. My uncle lives over there, my niece lives across Gross Point. And so, when it flooded, this, when it got all that rain, all of a sudden, everything was blocked up. Their houses flooded all the way up to the second floor, remember? And then all of a sudden, the drains opened up, and it all flushed out. So these are things that happened a long, long time ago. And my niece told me that her dad used to take her to meetings in Gross Point all the time, and they would talk about it, the things that was going to happen in the future in Detroit. And so this white woman got up and talked about things that were going to happen as far as these floods, these basements and things like that, that they're going to take over. And she remembered what she said, and then nobody believed her. And she said, I don't care if y'all believe me or not, I'm just trying to let y'all know, because I won't even be here to see this. I'm just letting y'all know for the future. So those are things that, that are going to happen.
And I appreciate the skepticism, but I'm going to let you know that there, I am they, I am a they. When you say they are trying to do this, I'm the they. And I'm going to tell you in, with, with all authority, because I know what I'm, there is no plan that has already been sketched out. We've worked on it, this is a proposed ordinance. This is literally how all proposed ordinances go, and here's what's different this time. Hold on, hold on, please, 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 I didn't interrupt you, I didn't interrupt you, I didn't interrupt you. What's different is that I actually came to the community. I'm right here. So there's no hiding this. We didn't have to do this. This wasn't mandated. This is, I know you don't care, but this is time that I thought you were, but this is because I respect you enough to bring this meeting to your neighborhood, to your community, to the district. We had one meeting in District One, that's my district, I'm going to hold it down all the time. We had another one in District Four, which is the east side, that's part of east-west. Where do we go next? Southwest Detroit. We're going to make sure we bring it here and have this conversation. So I think, I understand, again, the, the healthy skepticism over the years, but can y'all give a little credit to the fact that we are here having this conversation? We didn't just approve this in the cover of Knight. We're doing this right now with you all collaboratively. So, 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 so when you say they are creating this, I'm the they, and I'm letting you know right now. Yes, this is something I support. I, I support it heart. right now, yes, this is something I support, I, I support it hard. But the truth of the matter is, we're here because we're getting the feedback from the community.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, now, I've got a problem with that. I just asked a question, how many residents are in the city of Detroit? And I got to estimate about 700,000. This group here, and the focus groups they made form, is not going to be representative of the 700,000 people. What you should do is go block by block and ask the neighbors, "Do you want a chicken next to you?" Do that in every, every block, from Indian Village to East English Village to Great Engels, the 48217 area. And this, this sentence brought up some very important questions. I just got a letter from your dad. You know my insurance company said, "We are not going to give you insurance, because your property value is not high enough, for all states." She said about devaluing, devaluing our property, and we got to pay attention to that.
Ms. Landrieu, how are we saying that this is devaluing our property though? Explain.
They're going to fix it.
No, but, but we've just talked about, we've just had an example, and there's other examples as well. It's one thing to say that it's, that it's the fear, it's one thing for fear that that's the case, but it's another thing to be based on data, Ms. Land. Let's, let's base it on the real information. It's not, let's find out if there is a question from an insurance company as opposed to saying that it's already, we're already doing it, we've seen real life examples.
Y'all got space, they got space, Jay.
Ms. Landrieu, listen, this is, this is, and I keep going back, I go back again, and this is why, y'all can yell at me all you want, but I, I'm telling you right now, again-
700,000 residents, 700,000 voters need to be polled, 700, we got it.
What I'm saying again is, ladies and gentlemen, this is, and we're going to wrap it up because this, this is going wave, so, so, so allow me a chance to say this, I don't interrupt anybody. I didn't interrupt anybody. This is an ordinance amendment that affects the entire city of Detroit. I say it again, and there may be some folks who did not hear this when they came in, and we can say, and it will, and I'm going to pitch it in my neighborhood, for sure. And there may be some folks who want it and don't want it in District 6 as well. What I'm saying though is, this is not just for one area of the city. This is a citywide ordinance, so understanding how this affects everybody is important, and that's why we want to know how it affects you. I get the fears, I get all of that, but what I'm saying, this is for the entire city. So, even if District 6, your representative says, "No, I need," well, I'm not saying she's for it against, and she can tell you that, but what I'm saying is, we, I need four other council members to support me on this. That's what I need. Council members. Okay. No, that's just like every other ordinance that we have in the city of Detroit, council members, the folks that you all elected to represent, we get to the table whether you like us or not at this point. That's the process. We make those votes on your behalf. Now, that's why we're having this before any votes are being made. We're having a conversation. When is the vote supposed to come up? And that's the next thing, and that's going to be the last thing we're going to talk about, Jai. Okay, but wait a minute, but, okay, see- Because it's coming up in October, so October, we're looking at it, so we're hopeful, we're hopeful, me, that we will have this approved, and I'm saying me, by, yeah, I want it, I keep saying it, I'm the proposer. I'm a sponsor. You have, you have a microphone, you're sitting on council, and because you want it, you want to push it through. You're hearing our community saying, "We don't want it." So, we don't have your microphone, we don't have your position, we are not able to force or ram something down- Reach out to your council member who sits there, who will make that vote. We're telling you right now, and we'll tell our council member. There's others that are listening as well. Why, why are you still trying to push this? So, you know what, I won't push back anymore, all I was doing is just letting you know how I feel about it personally, as the sponsor of the ordinance, it makes sense that I would support it. I, I'm going to push what I'm, what I'm supporting. She, she, she said, remember Sontag, remember, you want to, want to come on up?
Yeah, let him talk. You do a great job, let her do her job. She represents us, they come and-
She does a great job.
I don't know that.
She does, we, we love, hold on, hold on. And just, again, keep in mind that it is not just what's happening in this room, there's other conversations that are happening as well, not in silence. All of the videos that we're doing, they're all recorded, everyone has an opportunity to review it, but we're taking feedback throughout the entire city of Detroit.
Thank you so much, Member Tate, for coming around. Just everyone, give his office a round of applause, Jai, his team, everyone worked really, really hard to bring information, to have conversations, to listen where people are at. If you're asking me where I stand on this, I don't know yet, because I'm getting messages from residents from other parts in District 6 that are really disappointed in this conversation, because they want to see chickens and bees in their neighborhood. So, we are discussing, we are taking information, I want to hear concerns, we're going to work on this. I want to thank you all so much for being here. Thank you again, Member Tate, welcome to 48217. We have a lot of opinions, a lot of feelings, a lot of heart here, but thank you so much for coming here. And folks, there were questions, there are sandwiches in the back, but there is a question about when is the next meeting, and then when the potential timeline to introduce. Do you know either of those two?
So, we don't know, so introduction, we don't know, so we're trying to-
Okay.
In terms of the next meeting, we can make sure it's included.
Okay. So, for anyone interested in knowing, there is going to be another public meeting, it'll be citywide. Our office can make sure to share that information once we get it from Member Tate's office, and then we will also be sharing if and when this is going to be introduced through my committee. So, if you get our newsletter that goes out every Friday, you'll get more information there. Thank you all so much for being here, have a great night, have a blessed day, everyone, thank you.